Paul, Jim?
Nope.
Krista?
Here.
Mike's coming. Tim?
Here.
Brent?
Here.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda.
You guys are okay, I'd like to switch nine and 10 on the agenda, so Coach Boyer is here for questions and then you can go.
Okay.
Cause your one, your one to one, might take a bit of conversation.
Sure.
If that's okay with you, Coach Boyer.
Yeah.
And we're gonna move you up? No, not yet, but just be ready.
That would be wonderful.
Cooler heels just in there. There's no issues with the minutes, move on to claims.
I think we asked before, but how long do those outstanding checks, how long do you keep those around?
I should probably get that cleaned up. According to the auditor, she says that we have to try to find these people and try to reissue the check, which some of them might be able to do. If we don't, then we have to send it into Nebraska's unclaimed property. So the cost is to do that. I've got some lunch checks that are like $2.30. So I've been dragging my feet on that a little bit. But that's probably something I'll look into to try to start cleaning some of that up.
It doesn't amount to much, but.
But you're right, it's, it's.
I didn't know how long you let them go.
Yeah, I will try to get a hold of some folks and see by December when I can find.
So we're on claims, you see we had our big annual insurance premium. Which, since I've been here, has just gone up that 2% per year. Did have our first claim, Mr. Schmidt could address that too. We had our first claim, first significant claim that since I've been here, $14,000 claim for pole vault equipment that was ruined by the windstorm last month. So we have, you know, $1,000 deductible and we're getting new pole vault mats, cover and standards. Sometimes it's kind of nice to have a claim, feel like you're getting some of that $73,000 back.
So it's more than just vehicle insurance?
Really, you don't worry, it's the whole property, yep.
Didn't blow the track away?
Yeah. That was, we did try, that was a claim that didn't go anywhere last year about this time. So, that would have been, we did got about 10 years worth of premium back on that.
It also includes that workers' comp as well, part of the insurance.
Just on the claims, Mr. Sauer right now?
What's that?
Just on claims.
Okay.
Wyatt said, "I'm taking over." I didn't even have to ask him.
Sit down and shut up and whatever you want.
Didn't even know I wasn't here, did you?
Do you have anything on that gas contract?
No.
No?
Nothing yet. We won't know for about a year.
You don't know what they locked it in for?
I haven't been notified yet.
You don't know what you're doing, and you've got that.
Is everybody good on that there? I started to check, so.
Thanks.
Okay, so we move on to possession items. There's that review board policy series 501.
Need a motion to accept, we didn't accept consent agenda.
We didn't, we didn't.
Okay, okay.
I'll move, I'll move, except the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been first and second, all papers, any aye?
Aye.
All pros and aets? Review policy series 501.
This is a federal mandate. Has to do with section 504, for the most part, for, through the ADA, so I mean, it just, just needs to update a date on the review line, there's nothing new, and if there ever were, it would, it would be hand dated, or mandated, handed down by federal and state statute. So there's nothing we need to change or really could.
Something I saw reading through is 501 R1. Third from the bottom line, it says arbitrar shall submit his decision, I don't know if that should be gender neutral.
Is her?
There.
Yeah, or there, yeah. Doesn't change any meaning, so I, I can change that without motion.
Any else have anything on that? Number eight, building grounds.
Okay, after, you know, looking at numbers a little more and, and doing some projections with Kelly, and then she did get some confirmation today on tax revenues for next month, which are big, our May checks are pretty big. So we've got, in the building fund specifically, about $200,000 coming in next month, and then.
This month in May, which will be.
This month in May, which will be in next month's packet, and then about how much through August then. So we're looking at about $1.2 million balance at the end of the fiscal year. About 1.2. We've got the four and a quarter that is guaranteed coming out. Okay, so, and then when I heard from Brian, and then I've shared with you via email, this project, this 77 building lights and ceiling project was, was, two years ago was made a priority item by Building and Grounds. It's never gonna be cheaper than it is now. Okay, so, I mean, it, last year was a $405,000 bid, it's now 370 for the same project. You know, putting it off another year, and that's an economics thing, obviously, that's a supply and demand, you know, that, so that's, that's why it's less expensive, and I know you understand that. So, you know, I feel it's my responsibility to try to be, obviously, a good steward of taxpayers' money. And a project that we know we're gonna do, shouldn't we do it when it will never be cheaper? It will never be this, you know, less expensive than it is now. You know, but then do we have the money? Well, we do, we've already levied the money. You could argue we've already levied the money for this project, because we've got $1.2 million in the bank, four and a quarter's gonna come out. If we project, you know, for, for next year, you know, we're looking at 500 to 650,000 in building fund next year, if you leave the levy at eight to nine cents. So even, even to do the elementary, to pay off the elementary through next year, to do this, to do the wall, to do the HVAC, okay, you're still looking at 400 to 500,000 dollars balance after that's all paid off. Next year at this, at, at the end of fiscal year 2020, 2021, going into that next year, you're starting with 400 to 500,000 in the bank with all of that paid for. And then you're starting to look at the track, so the longer you put this off, the closer it gets to that track expense, which could be 600 to 800,000, 500 to 800,000, depending upon what we run into. And, you know, we, we can't keep bumping that track expense down a year. I mean, that's a 2023 at the latest, I would say, as I've looked closer at the track, it needs some significant patching before we run out of it even next spring, in 2021. So, this, you know, this wouldn't deplete our building fund. I mean, we still have these revenues coming in, significant revenues. The only thing is if you wanted to bring that building fund down several cents this next fiscal year. What you can do, just can be more difficult to bring it back up to pay for that track, unless you want to be a small school without a track. Which some schools do, that'd be a decision, you know, that you'd, you know, maybe have to seriously consider, but. But if we want to have a track, we have a three-quarter million dollar expense looming. So, I mean, the money's there. It's never gonna be cheaper, putting it off will cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars more. So I just wanted, you know, give you all that information to, even though, of course, we didn't have all this last month. So I know that the decision last month, now it's, it's before you again, but circumstances have changed, I feel, so. You know, just wanted to bring that to you to consider again. You know, the, the wall and the ramp. Visited with Scott again about it specifically since, since last month. And your idea for the ramp, he thought was, was the best idea, the smartest idea, the easiest way to do it. Just come straight up on the west side of the steps, all the way to about, he thinks within about 10 feet of the door, it should be leveled to the, to the plaza level. But he, he couldn't know at that point without bringing the engineer in, which he hasn't done yet, because I told him to cool it. You know, after this came in, this lower bid came in for this, I said, "Well, we, we maybe gotta pump the brakes on that." But he said, "That could be 10,000, it could be 20,000," for that ramp, anywhere from 10 to 20,000. And then the sidewalk, you wouldn't know until they started working, whether you'd have that $16,000 expense to replace the sidewalk. So, but even, again, even with those, you're looking at a balance of 400 to 500,000 next June after the elementary's paid off.
Dr. Alt, what's their timeline, start to finish?
Who would that be?
Whoever's doing the work.
You know, he didn't say, "We'll come in the day," well, they could come anytime, I would presume, you know, they, but based on what they've done in the past, it's a, I mean, it's a full summer job. It would take, I would guess, you know, a good two months. Depending upon his electricians and any other contractors, electrician's gonna be his biggest contractor.
All the subs is his responsibility?
Yes.
I would be comfortable voting in favor of it if we could get a drop dead date out of them, with a financial penalty if they don't comply.
Okay.
Make it a comfortable range, but we want it done, I mean, we don't want a mud hole through the winter, then jacking around next spring and more expense. I want X amount in a timeframe.
And, you know, some of you can speak to Brian's work in the past, he's done work for us in the past, we've been, I think, pretty satisfied with his work, but it's definitely a reasonable thing to have deadlines with penalties after a certain time for what's within his control, which the whole thing should be, but. But yes, I visited with him today, and he said he would have a contract first thing in the morning if approved, so I could, would expect him to be specific with start and end dates.
Did he do the elementary?
Did.
He did the, he did the work.
He did the bathrooms, locker rooms, and then he did the elementary ceiling.
He did the HVAC, or the actual air conditioner.
Didn't do the air quality, but he did what, he did precisely what it is we would ask him to do.
Okay.
We wouldn't be trading this project.
I, I looked at rebates, energy savings rebates, they still exist, but they don't amount to a whole lot. It's like 8 to 12 dollars a light. So it's, it's not a significant cost savings. At one point, I thought, oh, that this could maybe be another 10 to 20,000 dollar savings, but, but it's not. So we would have, I don't know how many lights are gonna be in here, but it's about 10 to, or 8 to 12 dollars a light, depending upon the funding of that grant.
So apparently nobody else wants, wants them to do anything right now, or?
Well, things have slowed down nationwide, that's, that's true. But this is obvious, this is not his only business though, as well, so he's got other things that he does, but. But we do have a relationship with him, he's, he's worked with us, we've treated him well, he likes us, he knows our building, he knows our facilities, he knows Gail and his staff well. I don't know his personal circumstances, which would make him available for much of the summer, but. But it, it would be a big bite, so Doc Thorey, you're exactly, you're exactly right, we've had the past couple summers of being, of thinking, this is not, there's no way this is gonna be done. There's no way we're gonna be ready. But we always, they always were, they got it done.
What's your timeframe, Manley, when do you think it'll be done, start of school?
I would want it done August 1, because Gail and his crew would have to do these floors. They wouldn't be able to do anything in this building until, until he's done. Cause I don't think they would say, well, at some point, he'd say, "Okay, this, that quad is done," so they'd be able to get in there, but there's still gonna be construction debris, even if they're down here.
Right.
What you run into a little bit too then are the electrical inspectors, and so once these ceilings come down, nobody's been up there in 40 years. Things have changed, we, we did find that out in the elementary, and that slowed things down over there. Cause there's a lot of wires that are up here, that Tom Sauer has probably run illegally over the years. But what we found was, you know, and nothing can be laying on top of the grid, but, so there are probably wires back and forth, not a tremendous amount, cause we're not an industry, but they all have to be tied up, eight inches or 12 inches, whatever, off the grid, and that was very time consuming over there. We didn't, we don't intend, or haven't intended to hire any additional help for this summer, for, for Gail's crew, since they've got an extra six weeks. But there might, that would maybe be a necessity to have a couple of dudes come in and zip tie wires, you know.
But they paid them for that?
Yeah.
When they did that last time?
Yeah, yeah, that's true, they did, so that wasn't even.
Well, even, they hired a lot of teachers and staff to come in and help.
The cleaning part.
They were running light, and they paid them to do that.
We had probably, I don't know, half a dozen or more of our staff that were paid pretty well by Trane, which I had, our train and Icon, I mean, they, cause I, three years ago, Icon came and did their own stuff. Two years ago, where when we did the elementary, Icon was contracted by Trane, so. But they would be on their own on this one. And then on the, the HVAC unit, we had the, the RUTS and the Rasmussen bids, and the RUTS bid was about 5,000 less, but when I looked at it more closely and talked to Rasmessens more specifically, Rasmessens right now is about $2,000 more, cause there were a couple things that were embedded in his bid that weren't in the RUTS bid. If we're gonna maintain our, our relationship with Rasmussen on the servicing of the units, maybe there's an advantage to have them do it.
They take care of this building right now, and Trane does it. I don't know if you shared with the art, with everybody about the art room, what you found out about that?
Yeah, the art room, I think we're gonna pause that. The unit for in there, we did find that we had a couple, we had two exhaust fans above the ceiling that were installed years ago, Gail tells me by Leon, that weren't working, and who knows how long they hadn't been working, and pulling some of that heat and moving it to into the hallway and above here, so that seemed to make a difference when, you know, we went up there and recognized these fans were up here and they weren't working, and what Gail did specifically, one of them, I think he just had to plug in. The cord had run into that kiln room or something, and there was a bunch of stuff in front of it, didn't even know that it was unplugged. And another one, I think he, he did something with the motor, but at any rate, and we have a new, a new teacher coming in. And it's not all about teachers, about the kids, about the whole environment in there, but. But I think maybe we want to see if, if just, you know, moving that air up there helps to make that environment more tolerable than it, than it had been.
What is the cost of the HVAC, would be?
The HVAC is 35, 35,000 and change. He was able to come in and look at it and rebid it, the initial guy from Rasmussen that came and bid it was gonna bring in a crane from Omaha, and this new guy was like, "Okay, he's, I don't know why he thinks we need X amount of ton crane, cause we can do this with a telehandler." This unit doesn't weigh enough to need a crane from Omaha, so there was a $3,000 savings right there, or something to that effect, whatever. But for the most part, it was pretty accurate, or pretty similar to the, to the other bid, but then I noticed that there were two things that weren't included. It was a heating unit that weren't included in the RUT bid. And we did think that we probably, while we're at it, we want it to provide heat as well, just in case we need it. And the Rasmussen bid included heat and the piping for it, and the RUTS bid didn't. So they're, they're within $2,000 of each other. And then again, Rasmussen, if they're gonna service it, we probably want to maybe have them install it.
Did they do all, put all this in originally, do you know? Or were they acquired later on?
I know that they did the most recent one before this, how far back you go, I, I wouldn't know that.
As far as doing the 77 billion, I guess my opinion on that is, you know, there are two, two choices in my mind, one, we either need to get lower taxes, or the other one, if we're not gonna lower taxes, I don't feel like we should just sit on the money, I think we need to be as efficient with it as possible, that's our job as a board, is to be efficient with our money. But just to say, "Well, we're gonna help them out by not spending it," that doesn't do anybody any good. We either need to figure out a way to give it back to them, lower taxes, or save, get more for a buck. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm still on the fence about which way I think it should go, I mean, I know times are tough, and I don't know if we lower the levy two or three cents, is it really gonna help? I don't know what that lowers taxes, two or three cents on levy.
Would anybody would, would agree with that?
If you lowered it, yeah. And that's why I'm on the fence, I mean, then you're showing a sign of, you know, trying to help mom a little bit for a while.
But these guys are out of Hastings, right?
Which guys? RUTS, RUTS is out of Hastings.
No, no, for the ceiling.
He's out of Wichita, or somewhere down in Kansas. Brian's from down in Kansas.
That's what I'm saying, if the money's there, we're not gonna give it back.
Right.
We better, we better take advantage of it.
Where are you gonna put all these people? Yeah, it's their problem to figure out.
They put campers in the park, is what they did two years ago.
Is it open now?
They probably won't.
It would be by then.
I bet they won't have eight, 10 people max.
Yeah, he didn't have that many.
Like Christian, last time was out of O'Neill.
Came from O'Neill.
He drove back.
Well, that's not, everybody comes from down there.
Correct.
Right, they subcontract locally.
Well, they get to sit on the old gravel road by the egg shop, run their power.
Well, again, that's their, their concern, but yeah, they set up shop in a pad across the street.
Dr. Alt, so we anticipate, and I know this is a few months down the road, for the next budget, we're, we're not anticipating an increase in the tax request, are we?
No, no. You added a teacher, let me address that, I mean, you added a teacher last month. We've hired one, two, three, four, after tonight, we will have hired six teachers, four of them are base pay. One of them is 45, and the other is 48. You've hired six teachers, all under 60. We, the teachers that they have replaced, their total salary was 304,000. The total salary of the, the ones that have come in is 200 and, 214. So even with adding a teacher, you're still $50,000 ahead, even with adding a teacher.
Does that figure in the retirement?
Now, that does not figure in the retirement, so we have two teachers, we're gonna pay 7,000 a year for five, and we haven't replaced Andrea Miller at 53,000, and we haven't replaced Connor Zimmer at 39,400. So we still could, that balance will still shift some.
You haven't taken them off for the payroll either?
No, no, but as of right now, you're 49,527 dollars in the black, that's with an additional teacher. So, so that's, you know, that's not gonna precipitate necessitating any type of levy increase. Our valuations, I'm projecting a flat valuation, it's gone up minimal percent the past two years, went down a touch two years ago, so projecting a flat valuation. You know, we, we can probably stay even, we've, you know, whether you lose a penny or two on general, I mean, that's your big one, obviously, if you, you know, wanna lose a penny or two on building, you can do that, every penny's about $65,000 in, in taxable revenue. It just depends on planning for that track. Cause I don't know that I see any other six-figure project. I, I don't know that I, that I see a necessary one. Yeah, maybe we'd like to add on to the shop, do we have to? Probably not, yeah, maybe we'd like to, modernize the music room, we've talked about that, do we have to? Probably not. Do we have to do something with the track? We have to, or we let it go. But I, I doubt that we're going to.
So we're 6% under budget right now, and the, the funds that aren't spent, what happens to them at the end of the fiscal year? You talked, I touched on this, I think, last year, but I can't remember.
Yeah, you, you, there's a certain percentage that you can carry over. It, it's called unused budget authority, so certain percentage that you can carry over, now the Unicam rules wanting to trim that. So every given year, you know, we're, we will watch and see what the, you know, the fiscal hawks or the property tax relief people, you know, they, they go after, you know, they, they focus on schools. And so that's a place where they're looking to save just a little bit of money, it wouldn't save a whole heck of a lot, so it doesn't do a tremendous amount to us, but to a great degree though, Wyatt, that's, those are, you know, those are just, those are, those are just figures to help to balance the budget, so we usually don't have, even though, okay, we, we came in 10% under budget of a, of a, you know, a $5 million budget, so we've got $500,000. There's only a certain, a small percentage of that which we can carry over, it's make a tremendous difference, but we can't ever really count on that. But we, you know, there are things that we can do to, to try to stay lean. You know, we, we dropped our FTE by two a couple years ago, did that make a tremendous difference? Did we feel it? Well, not really, but we also haven't had general levy increases over the past several years, our tax asking, our, our general fund tax asking has gone up a fraction of a percent, you know, the past several years, so for, for what the school district has done with regard to building funds and facilities, it's, it's done, I think, pretty efficiently. But yes, the building fund levy has gone from three cents to nine cents in the past four years, so there's where you have quite a bit more to work with. You don't have as much to work with on your general fund, because 70% of that is set by teacher salaries and benefits.
And at that nine cents, we're bringing in roughly 500,000 a year in the building fund, is that right?
Yeah. Depending upon the amount, the percentage of folks that. Depending upon the amount, the percentage of folks that pay their taxes, because we don't get a hundred percent of taxes. Yeah, we're gonna get five to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the nine cent letter.
Six cents. So what you were saying, after we make the second payment next summer, we're sitting at about four eighty?
We're still sitting between four and five. So also the lowest.
Come in next year.
Yep.
That'd be twenty-two.
Yep. So you could still, and Tim, that's, that's kinda what I tried to project. So if you were to, to be aggressive and, and, and spend four hundred and eighty thousand dollars this summer, not counting the elementary, right? So we're gonna pay that four and a quarter. If you were to spend another four eighty, okay, you're gonna have about a three hundred thousand dollar balance going into next fiscal year. You're looking to bring five to six hundred thousand in next year if you leave your, your levy at nine cents. So you're gonna have eight to nine hundred thousand next year at this time. And then you're gonna make your final payment on the elementary. It's gonna drop you down to between four and five. So you're gonna have four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand after that's all paid off. Then you can look at two years of building fund levy, we can cover a track, maybe even one, really. Cause you could go back up to nine hundred thousand potentially, um, after twenty-one, twenty-two. You could consider, that would be the most aggressive plan to get the track done, twenty-twenty-two. But you'll bring, that, you'll bring your building fund down under probably two hundred thousand by that time. But you, you really don't need your building fund to sit there with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's, it's designed to levy, spend, plan, levy, spend.
If you're not gonna spend it, you should request it.
Exactly. And you, you only request it if you have a plan for it, right? And the, the building grounds over the past, yeah, several years, prior to me coming, certainly had an excellent plan with three different tiers of priorities. And those have shifted, some have moved to this column and that column. But this was a priority one, two years ago, when we had, uh, before we did the bathrooms. Then my first year here, when we put together that community facility planning committee, this was on the, the short-term list.
Kind of agree with you. I don't wanna raise the ask, you know, what the levy does depends upon what the valuation does. But what the asking is.
It's always plus.
Yep.
It's gotta stay the same.
It's gotta stay the same. But the thing we can do is, and, and I think it will be no problem to hold it. But if, for some reason, we have to raise it a cent or two, we can lower the building fund a cent or two to offset that. You know, so we're still asking for the same total dollars without raising taxes, expenses. But we'll lower one, raise the other one. If, if it comes to that point, we'll, for whatever reason. But I, yeah, I do not wanna raise the ask at all. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you should, because you're, you know. Further, Krista?
I kinda think I agree with Dr. Thor. We should have some kind of dates in there. I mean.
Cause we don't know what he's got planned. Maybe he's overbooking.
Yeah.
We don't know whether he's short on work or whether he's.
Yeah, we sure would like to make sure it's done by August one.
How soon's he gonna know, Doctor?
Well, I'm texting him right now, if you want.
I'd, I'd be comfortable if he was here.
I almost told him to come up from Kansas.
That way he knows we're for real on that building.
Well.
He's been here last two summers.
You'd know he's for real, too.
It's been the third summer he's working in this building, so he knows.
But Mike can doubt.
You're more personable than I am.
He's, he's a good guy.
I'll send a train on you.
Actually, he's a weak form of my trade.
Is he really?
Yeah.
Raise a sheep?
This is how.
Raise a sheep? He went out to look at Gail's sheep.
So should we table this for now and see if we hear back from him? Did you send him something?
Yeah. So you wanna, uh, consider it later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're, you know, if I, if I look at, and I asked him, three-seventy firm, I mean, you know, there, there can always be change orders, but there would have to be something, you know? He said, three-seventy firm, uh, ceiling tile, grid, LED lights, uh, all-new exit signs and smoke detectors. Okay, that's exactly what they did in the elementary. So if you wanna look at, if you wanna know what it would look like, all you'd have to do is go look at the elementary. Your wall max would be seventy-five. The wall is forty, you got a ramp, you got a potential sidewalk. Your HVAC is thirty-five, so that's four hundred and eighty. Your, your shop lights, he already ordered them. I mean, they're already cleaning up the shop. I mean, that's, that's, you know, miniscule compared to this, but. So you're looking at four hundred and eighty, so I mean, you could conceivably, you know, say, uh, not to, you know, just to prove a not-to-exceed for summer projects and. But let me see if I hear.
The amounts you were saying about the wall and the ramp, that includes the dirtwork landscape and everything?
What we had last week, I had ninety thousand wrote down for that wall.
For that wall?
Without the ramp. Is that?
That was if it, the, the wall was forty. Do you still have the, his, copy of his bid? The wall was forty, the, the sidewalk was sixteen.
I got sixty written down for the wall.
And, yeah, and then he thought twenty.
I think ninety, we were totally against that.
Ninety was.
With the wall and the AC, you were thinking ninety thousand dollars or something. What about the egg shop?
So you weren't from wanting to spend a hundred thousand dollars to wanting to spend four hundred and eighty? Wow.
Maybe you have Mr. Sausage zooming.
What's that?
Maybe you have him zoomed in.
Is the heating wall and handicap by up to necessity?
I was, I was wondering if you could cut that out, I just.
Yeah, I think we should cut that out.
Just do this, if we're gonna do this big project, just do this big project and, and the lights.
In the air.
Forget about the ramp.
And he said the shop lights are already started, so.
Hey, Brian, I said, Brian, you get it done by August one? He said, sure, which is what I would expect him to say, but.
I think he's pretty much always made his day.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna do the handicap ramp then?
I would put it off of here, so. I mean, legally, we've got it right off, we don't have to do it, because we don't have handicap accessibility.
Okay, so if you were to pull the wall out, then you're looking at, uh, just over four hundred for this and the HVAC.
And who knows, a year from now, it may be cheaper yet. You know, we were jumping the gun by doing it. But there might not be anybody in business left to do it either.
Might get a ten-dollar coin next year, too.
Yeah, and nobody will care what we do.
That's when we should've did it, when we had ten-dollar coins.
Is that crap, you haven't said too much.
Hmm?
What do you think?
I don't know. It's a lot of money.
That was my feeling, too, just from, you know, we were a hundred and thirty K last month, and now we're four eighty. But if it doesn't do anybody any good, if it just sits there.
Right.
It not really help anybody out either. You ask for the money, so.
You already requested it, for the year.
And if we can get.
It's there.
If we can get a fifty thousand dollar, or you get fifty thousand bucks cheaper than what you planned on, I can see why, why it makes sense to do it, too. Yeah, it's a lot of, showing out a lot that we didn't think we were maybe gonna do. It would, it looks like it would set us up okay then, a couple of years down the road, if we did do the track. So as long as we don't have anything real big come out next year.
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, if there was something unexpected, there are likely other funding sources that would kick in. You know, if there's something catastrophic, you, you know, you, you, it's not so much that, okay, you, well, you didn't have a bunch of money in your building fund to take care of that. There's usually something else, uh, that you can cover. Even if you lost an HVAC at thirty thousand in the middle of winter, and you had to have it at thirty thousand, we can, we could cover that. And we, we budget, you know, that much and then some for, for those kinds of things.
But we stuck, uh, two hundred thousand in depreciation, too.
Yeah, not quite that much, but, um, but, but, yeah. I, I just, building, the building fund is not meant to be a biggie bank. Unless, okay, we need three years of whatever you feel is safe to budget. I mean, you can put that track off for five years, drop that down to four cents and wait that long. And that's, you know, what some schools do, but, you know, we, we don't quite have that amount of time.
Well, I think pushing that track into, what, a year and a half down the road is probably a little tight. If we push it in a couple more years, we can still pick up a couple of those little projects along the way. You know, and still have enough to do the track.
I'd like to see Skid start getting some bids and get a real idea.
On that track. It's probably gonna take an engineer on that. There's gonna be a lot of different options on that.
Yeah.
Raise the grade, do you wanna put, and you just wanna put it back the way it is?
City council's meeting is starting to accept bids on the, the road there. Now, that, that's about a hundred thousand dollar expense max for us, at least it was several months ago. But when that engineer comes in for that, I mean, whatever they do with that could affect what's gonna happen to our track, because water's gonna move a lot different, or better, hopefully, down there.
Sure, legally, they can't let the water back up onto our track any worse.
I'm sure they can't, yeah.
They can't.
Yeah.
Raise it, and then we got a lake out there, so they're gonna have to deal with whatever it takes to get the water to do what it's doing now.
How old is it?
The track was two thousand twelve.
Resurfaced.
And just resurfaced. And it, it doesn't need a new membrane surface, it needs to be tore out, um, and a whole new foundation. But then, is this, is the, is the foundation where the track foundation's gonna go, is that stable? Some people will tell you that it's not, that, you know, we, we should've planned better in two thousand twelve.
When was that originally put in?
Jeez, I wouldn't know.
What, what kind of foundation does it have?
Concrete.
And that shifted, and that's what's caused the track to shift?
Well, I, I don't know the geology very well of it, but, you know, what I'm told is the southeast corner is slurry.
Spongy ground.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would, we would need a, an engineer, the track people that, that know this and see this to, to kinda come and tell us really what we're looking at. But they would have to take some core samples. That was the last thing that, one of the last times somebody came up to visit with me about it, it's like, well, we, we gotta get some core samples here and see what we're dealing with.
Wouldn't that be included in the bid, too?
I would think so, but. But for some things, you're gonna pay X amount of dollars just to get a bid. Cause if you want something real accurate, they might have to go to, you know, a couple of weeks of work, hire an engineer just to tell you, here's what you're looking at. So you could be ten thousand in just to get a bid.
Well, that's inevitable anyway, I would say.
Yeah, for that expense of a project, that's, I think, pretty standard.
One of the things, when you look at that, too, um, I had some experience of that, building Norfolk Catholics Track down there. And we locked the track in two years in advance, probably. But we had a lot of argument on the thing. I wanted to tile it, and a couple of the, the wigs didn't want to, and it settled. We didn't even have district tract there after that. So that was, back then, that was three hundred and seventy-some thousand for the track, and it settled.
Guaranteed?
Yeah, so you gotta be careful with the, uh.
Did they guarantee it?
No.
Oh.
Cause we made the choice not to tile it. Be perfectly honest, I offered to tile it, in my experience, they wouldn't, still wouldn't do it.
Make that offer again.
Would you now?
We just want you to donate money, though, with no restrictions.
It's all being married.
Okay, so what do we wanna do here?
Yeah, well, it's not an action item, does it need to be an action item?
Well, yeah, you, you do need to, uh, vote on it.
Can we make that a new action item without it being?
You could, yep, yep. You can vote on anything, whether it's an action item or not. So, um, again, you're looking at, if three-seventy and thirty-five is four oh five, if you take the wall out, so you're looking at four oh five without the wall, four eighty with the wall, some, somewhere thereabout. You know, starting with that, you can say, you can give a not-to-exceed amount, or you can say, you can give a range, four fifty to five hundred.
Yeah, last time we went over about twenty thousand, what the bid was, just for extras, and I think we used fifteen thousand of the twenty, if I remember right, when they did locker rooms.
And then five, was it about five thousand for the, we figured for the lights?
Six I had written down.
Six days, was what I had.
I had six written down.
And, uh, HVAC here, that's a, that's a locked-in deal now?
Yes. I've got a firm bid on that.
So take out the wall and the ramp? Is that kind of a general consensus?
That's what I would do. Put it off another year.
But you got a real good idea what it's gonna take now to, to do it, to be it.
Cause I really think we need to put the ramp in, when we do it. The wall.
But it can wait.
So you, a, 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 a range could be four to four and a quarter. Four and a quarter gives you plenty of overage. Now, you could say anything over, though, it would still need to come to the board, so.
Yeah.
But you could give a four to four and a quarter range for summer projects, a seventy-seven building, HVAC and grid tile and lights.
So I don't think we went over on the elementary. What we went over was when we added the closet on the locker rooms, and that's what that, that, the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say twelve thousand.
I don't think we went over the bid at all on the, on the.
Well, I, I think I remember it was actually on time and under budget, technically.
So it would proceed this project, anything unusual popping up?
What, did you one time talk about getting all new clocks and getting this so that it would?
They seem to be close enough to where we're just gonna keep riding it out, yeah. We had about two months' worth of them being out of whack, and I think Gail did some kind of magic on it, I mean.
You got a little line done. I don't think they really know what they did, but for some reason, they all, all lied in it.
The, the scary thing is, the guy that installed them in seventy-seven and has worked on them since then, uh, is, is done. I mean, he's never returned my call. He's, uh, calls or emails, um, last time we saw him was about a year and a half ago. So, I mean, it, it would be take, and that was nice, cause he'd just, he'd kinda just keep them going. But there's nobody else I would anticipate that could keep them going. So at some point, yes, they'll have to go. I, I, it's a good question, though, Krista, I don't know if that's a twenty thousand dollar thing or a two hundred thousand dollar thing.
Nice thing.
Clocks and bells, yeah.
And whether it needs to be done at the same time as the ceiling?
Yeah.
Probably save a little bit, but if it's a big deal, I don't know. I would think it would be a, like, it would have to turn the ceiling back out, I mean, and have to lift some tiles off. I would think it would be, it would have to turn the ceiling back out, I mean, they'd have to lift some tiles off.
They're used to that, moving tiles and.
Yeah.
I guess I, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and spend between four hundred to four hundred twenty-five thousand for those three main summer projects. The HVAC, the lighting in this building, and then the shop lights.
I'll second.
Okay, that's my first and second, and myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Trent? Yeah. Krista?
Yeah.
Marshall Paris. Okay, let's get on, have a little, action items, discuss and take possible action on transition plan for one-on-one.
Should we, I'm sorry, we, we flip-flop nine and ten so that Dean, Mr. Boyer's here.
Oh.
If, if you guys would like to go and look, Dean's here to answer any questions you have, but I just wanted to share with you that. Our last wrestling mat purchase in two thousand three was a mat that we purchased with Creighton. It's a generic red mat we purchased with Creighton, so we share a mat that we bought in oh-three. The next mat was purchased in ninety-nine, was resurfaced in two thousand twelve. And our third mat was purchased when I was in high school, was resurfaced in ninety-four, oh-three, and two thousand twelve. It can't be resurfaced again. Osman just bought a new wrestling mat in the past year, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. We're proposing to purchase a used mat that would be used at a state wrestling tournament. We get a ten percent discount, and you can see that the price of that would be ten thousand two fifty.
That's all it'll be used, is just during the tournament?
That's the only time it'll be, it'll be used, it'll be brand-new down in Omaha, and then we'll bring it home.
So is that the way they do all those mats, every day out there?
And that's not the only, they had several tournaments, they, you know, they, that's pretty common to have new mats at some huge tournament. They tried to sell me one that was being used at a tournament in Papillion this spring. I said, no, we're, this is a next fiscal year consideration. But I, I thought, coach, nobody knows the history of our mats better than Coach Boyer. So he's here to answer any questions, and we can sure go look at the condition of them, they're laid out in the wrestling.
How do you resurface a mat? They put a whole new cover on the whole thing?
Yep, they, they take, we, we sent it away one time, and two other times since I've been here, they came to do it here. And they resurface both sides, they just cover it, and they have to cut off about six inches to a foot all the way around each time. So on our big ones, it's been done three times, it's two foot to three feet have been cut off. If we would, if we would cut it off again, we'll have to start adjusting the size of our circle. Which would, if, if it would get cut down and adjust again, it would still be within size limit. It would be getting really close to, to not, the circle not being big enough. I do know that when we bought the mat, the most plain mat you could get, and when was that, two thousand three that was bought? When the Dollmar mat was bought for sixty-eight hundred, that we split between us and Creighton, and that had no words, no picture, nothing on it. So I was shocked, actually, when he said that, the one that he looked into, there was a ten thousand or something. You know, because that's, that's been a while ago, though. We bought that, the Dollmar mat that we shared with Creighton, we made an agreement for each school to only use during competition. So those mats cannot be resurfaced, but the surface on it is, I mean, it's very good. The Resolites are really nice mats and everything, I really like them because of the softness and stuff. But they don't have our state tournament, so you don't get the discount for anything like that if you buy that. Plus, like they, like Mr. Earl said, when Osman bought their new one, that's four thousand dollars more. And then you have to resurface those, and these Dollmar ones just seem like, you know, like they last a heck of a long time.
So would you put the logo in after the state tournament?
No, it'll be on there.
It'll be on there.
It'll be ready to go.
As, as we, as we would order, it'd be right down, right down the floor, just like that.
If you ever notice, but every mat down there has, has a school logo on it.
Different, yeah.
So how many schools are getting new mats every year, if they don't bring them in to use? Their new ones, they go ahead and.
There are ten new mats that go home with ten schools. So you kinda need to, and there are more than ten schools that, that are doing just what we're doing. So we kinda need to be one of the first ten, you know, to get that, to get that discount, but. I don't know, it's probably, it's probably time to, to replace that. And again, this is the, the least expensive way to do it. Again, Coach Boyer talks about the Resolite or the Dollmar. The Dollmar is kinda one that's on a, like a styro, almost styrofoam-y with one surface. A Dollmar, it can flip both ways, and it's more spongy. Two completely different mats. One, two dudes can move the whole mat, and another one, you need a whole team to move it. But this is a, it's a less expensive mat, but the one we share with Creighton, we've had seventeen years. And like Dean said, the surface is good, but it's pretty dingy, and it's just plain red with white circles, you know. So to a certain extent, you know, your mat promotes your image.
So this mat would be just for tournaments and duels and stuff, right?
Yes, because what we could do is we could keep practicing on the Resolites that we have down right now. Where, where they're very obvious that they need to be, you know, competition-wise is around the edges. Because they peel, when they resurface them, everything looks good for a few years, get it moving, and things get, just get cracking. And then pretty quick, the edges get peeling up, and then where the tape is always removed, you know, that's, that's where it's very noticeable. And I think in the history, you'll look about every seven to nine years, our mats have been needed to be resurfaced. So if you resurface both of them, that would cost about three thousand dollars. About fifteen hundred a piece.
To resurface them again?
Yes, the, the last time that we did it, it was about fifteen hundred dollars.
And that was two thousand twelve, so it's significantly more now, I bet.
So if they resurface one with the logo there, does that cost you a lot more, or do you lose the logo?
Well, they can't do anything with the logo. What they do is, they.
They just did the edges?
They go around the logo, because they're, they don't spend all the time redoing all that. It's just, it's just the main part of the surface.
But you practice on them Resulites and use them in tournaments now, right?
Yes.
So you get a lot more wear than what this would get?
Yes, yes, it does.
So this mat would last quite a while for you?
Well, like our other Dollmar has lasted seventeen years, and that's all we do with that. And I'm not too sure if it's gonna last another fifteen years.
We might, we might sell our share back to Creighton for three, four thousand dollars. When that's all we paid for it, seventeen years ago.
Where would you store this one, do you have a place to store it?
Well, if, what we would need to do is probably go down underneath the wrestling room with one of them. I would rather keep the new one in my wrestling room along the wall, like where we have the Dollmar dish. And the one that we share with Creighton would probably get moved downstairs, because then I can keep a closer eye on the newer one.
We store Creighton's all the time, or just wherever it ends up?
We store it the majority of the time, because they say that they don't have really any place to store it. So they get it from us right before their high school tournament, and, and then we get it back from them before ours. So they have it about three months, two, three months, and then we have it the rest of the year.
It's behind a locked door most of the time, it's in Coach's wrestling room. Takes up a little space, but, you know, it's, it's doable.
That's why I was wondering, if you're gonna have two of them to store, but.
One of them would, yeah, we couldn't do another one in our room. It would, it would need to go to, especially in home, with the amount of kids that we have in there, we're kinda tight anyway, so.
No trouble with mice or anything down there that chew them up, or, you know?
No, we haven't had any problems.
More bats than mice.
I guess.
So is it gonna have this flag, it's kinda the background?
Well, I mean, that doesn't have to be the final design, but, but yeah, that's the design they've worked up. Obviously, you know, it's not a color picture, but yeah, it's a, it's red with white letters, black trim on the letters. The flag is a watermark, so it's a shaded flag.
This is the color.
The pirate icon has the gold highlights on it, so, and then you've got your red and your green starting markers, obviously. So, yeah, it'll be sharp, I mean, and, and, you know, doesn't, again, it doesn't have to be that. But Coach Boyer and I kinda worked that up a couple of months ago, you know, as a, as a start. But we reconsidered whatever, whatever he wanted to do, but, yeah, it costs a little more to get that design on there, obviously.
Like Dean said, it was gonna last probably seventeen, you know.
About time Dean retires.
And stuff. He's taking it with him, huh?
Okay, may I ask, any more questions? I'll make a motion to purchase a new wrestling mat at ten thousand, is it?
Ten thousand two fifty.
Ten thousand two hundred fifty.
Second.
The first and second, Krista?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes, myself, yes.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go back to number nine?
Yep.
Discuss and take possible action on transition plan for one-on-one digital device model. You're on your own tonight.
Nah. Mrs. Sausser, we're good.
He was, you didn't see him?
He's coming back, he's on the jog.
And Mrs. Thompson's here, and if she unmutes herself, she'll say hi.
I'm on camera.
You sounded kinda muted. You don't have to cover your mouth when you're talking into a computer, you're.
Sorry.
She got a mask on?
Yeah, you don't wanna get a computer virus.
That wasn't bad, pretty lame, but.
I'm gonna steal a chair. Did you, Tom, really, or?
You lock up?
I think you did. There, he just ran back.
Yeah, he's running right now.
Just ran back.
He went and changed clothes, look at that guy. We'll turn this on, because we put together just a little bit of information, give you guys visual too, and this stuff, so. You went home and changed, didn't you?
Of course, our connection was not regular.
Is that what happened?
Well, that was a plan, I was pretty big.
Part of the mess.
Fix that now, under the place. Is it better?
Yep. Um, so last time we met with you guys, we talked about going one-on-one with Chromebooks and stuff. And so we wanted to put together just kind of a long-range plan of what we would envision it looking like. So you have a better understanding of what we're kinda leaning towards. So what we've done is break it down into four-year rotations, working with Mr. Sausser on this. So year one would've been teacher devices, so we considered last summer our year one, so twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So what we would do in that year is purchase MacBooks for all of the teachers. And what we're going to do is keep thirty of those Apple laptops in a cart to use. Because there are some programs that you can get on MacBooks that you can't use on Chromebooks. So if we had a class that needed those programs, we would still have that available to use. So every time we purchase new MacBooks for the teachers, we would keep thirty of them in a cart, be able to use those whenever we needed. The remainder of the devices, then, we would not keep, we would use that on a technology sale. So we would open it up with students and staff, if anybody wanted to buy their devices, then at the end of that, four years. Or we could then open it up to the public. And if anything wasn't worth selling, we would send that directly to the recycling company. So anything not sold would go back to that, which that's in Sioux City, Tom? Is that where we send that?
I think it comes from Sioux City, Sioux City or Omaha.
Okay. So that would be our year one. This year would be what year two would look like. So we would purchase Chromebooks for grades three through twelve. Grades three through eight are going to be using about a twelve-inch device. It's a little bit smaller, it's a little bit cheaper. The three through six devices stay in the classroom with the teachers, so each classroom would have a cart. Those devices are stored in the cart, charged in the cart, don't leave the classroom, don't go home with students. So the teacher would allow them to use them, and then they put them back when they're done, so on and so forth. Our seventh and eighth graders would use the same device, but they would be full one-to-one with students. Meaning that those devices would go home with the students, they're responsible for them. They would be checked out with a charger, a Chromebook, all identified through serial numbers. Tom would go through and make sure everything's labeled and marked, and he'd keep everything in a spreadsheet to keep track of who has what. That student's responsible for turning it back in. We put, signed a technology agreement. We would have a Chromebook handbook then, that students and parents would have to sign, with all of your logistics in there of, if a screen is broke. That's where we take money out of a technology fee, which we have a little bit of information on that later. To solve it, but then saying that if you were to lose your device, or you don't check anything in at the end of the year, you're responsible for reimbursing the school for that device. So we have to put a little bit of ownership back on the kids and on the parents with them signing it, saying that when we check something out to you, it has to come back to the school. Grades nine through twelve are going to receive a bigger device, since they would be using it more, more research papers, things of that nature. So we wanna have a little bit bigger device for them to use. And those would also be full one-to-one with, with students. Those devices would get replaced every four years, so then, this would come back around in twenty twenty-four, I believe. And then old devices, again, we would make available through a technology sale, where students would then be opened up to buy these at the end of four years. Or we would open it up to the public for them to purchase them. If anything that's not sold, or anything that's not able to be sold, I believe is what we talked about, we would then send to recycling. Because of course, there's gonna be devices that are gonna get, I mean, you have lemons in anything that you buy, so there's gonna be something that's not going to work.
So you're not trying to match this with the year, so they, they have it for the four years, obviously?
No.
No, you wanna go into that, the rotation?
That was brought up by the two principals that every year, the incoming freshmen would get new devices and keep those for four years. And just keep them on the graduated, which sounds great in theory, but from an IT management standpoint, it'd be somewhat of a nightmare. Because then I could potentially have six different devices, models, brands, that I've gotta support and deal with, you know, and that kinda thing. Where here, I'm looking at two, so it makes it a lot, a lot easier to manage, I guess. So I kinda talked with them about that, and feel like this is a better way to go. And then when it's, they're still gonna get the opportunity to purchase their device, they just might not always be as senior when they do that.
So the three through sixth grade, they'll just stay in their rooms, that doesn't make any difference with the seventh, eighth graders. One time, they'll get a new device, and then two years later, the next group, they'll get used devices, correct? They won't?
So those two years, those devices will stay with seventh and eighth grade in this building.
Yeah.
So if you're an eighth grader, say you were to do this this summer, coming in next year, you're an eighth grader, you would use a smaller device. That following year, you would move up to the ninth grade and use the devices that were set aside for ninth grade.
What I'm saying, the seventh, eighth graders aren't necessarily gonna get the same device both years.
Yeah, the seventh graders.
Yep.
So the seventh graders, so this goes through, the next year, seventh graders get devices, they will get the same device when they're an eighth grader.
The ninth grader's a blue cow, you know, so.
And then the eighth grade, the last year's eighth graders will go to the next year's seventh graders.
Yep.
And then in the elementary building, the grade local devices will stay in the classrooms. So the third grade devices will always be third grade devices, fourth grade devices will always be fourth grade devices. So they'll just have their set cards, and students might have a device number, but they'll only use that device for one year.
Got it on that? You got anything else, Heather, on that one?
I don't think so.
Okay, you probably can't see what we're doing, I should've shared my screen with you.
No, it's okay, I got, I've got the.
You gotta hold up.
Yeah.
Okay, so then year three, what we looked at, we talked about doing iPad. Okay, so then, year three, what we looked at, we talked about doing iPads with the lower elementary, K through two. And so, what we would do in year three is purchase new iPads for K through two, and also the athletic department, which I think is two iPads, or three, three iPads that we use. These devices would be kept in carts for grades K through two, anything that we purchase for athletic events will go to Mr. Sauer's office. And then, again, it's kind of the same thing with old devices, after four years, we make them available through a technology sale, and anything that we are not needed goes to recycling. And Ms. Thompson, you want to touch on iPads a little more?
Yeah, so actually, to fill kindergarten to second grade this next year, we would use Chromebooks in the second grade classroom, no, sorry, MacBooks in the second grade classroom, and we would use iPad that we currently have on hand. So, while everyone would be getting new devices this coming year, they would still be getting devices as well, they would just wait for the following year for new devices. And that gives our second grade teacher the opportunity to really look and decide, because she was really in the, up in the air still about whether she wanted to go iPads at second grade, or Chromebooks at second grade. So, having the MacBooks in the classroom gives her the opportunity to see how the students will do with laptops. But otherwise, then the kindergarten, both kindergartens, both first grades and second, would have iPads if that was the route they chose. And Tom, I believe we talked about maybe not needing to purchase every four years with iPads, correct?
Um, it's possible, yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't go much more than that, but yeah, I'm sure you could easily get five, six would probably be pushing it.
Okay.
You good with that one, Heather?
Yep.
Okay, so then, year four, what we would plan for are technology updates, so some of the things that we had talked about are storage carts in the elementary for them. Currently, we have, we have enough carts, right, Tom?
Yes.
When we talked about it. But if we wanted to update those to actual Chromebook carts, we could do that. If we needed any form of software updates, if we needed new projectors, if we had to update wireless, Tom, if you want to hit on anything else that we would need to do, technology-wise?
It would just be big, big technology purchases that aren't normal updating that I do on a yearly basis. You know, like, I try and get a couple of new projectors every year, just to keep them refreshed and everything. I'm talking like, we had to do a full-scale, replace our wireless, you know, that's going to be a big purchase, or I don't know, say, we had to replace a server, or some network switches, or something like that, that's going to cost a significant amount of money, I would plan to do it in this year, so that it was not in the same year as a, a purchase of laptops, or iPads, or Chromebooks.
Heather, do you have anything for that one?
No.
Okay. So, then, we talked a little bit about technology fees and what we would do with that. Since devices are staying in the school for grades three through six, and K-two with iPads, we would not charge a technology fee. What we want to do is use this as kind of an accountability piece for students. So, students, seventh grade through twelfth grade, you'd pay twenty dollars per student. If we go to free and reduced, our free students, we would still ask five dollars, reduced, it'd be ten dollars. And the funds for that then go into an account that we would use to purchase screens if we need to, anything that gets broken, or if a keyboard gets broken, or a replacement piece that Tom has to order, that we would use the money out of that fund to pay for it. If we don't use any money out of that fund at the end of the year, that fund then goes towards purchasing new devices that next year, whether it be Chromebooks, iPads, MacBooks, whatever, we're making purchases technology-wise, that's what we would use that for, so it's getting used. You got anything, Heather, on that one?
No.
So, it'd be about three thousand dollars, roughly?
Twenty, twenty times, I think there was ninety-three in there, so if it was a hundred, it'd be about two thousand.
This is just on the devices going home.
Yep.
This is, yeah, so just seven through twelve, so.
So, Tom put together a spreadsheet, this slide and the next slide, to kind of show you what the cost would be. Precision IT out of Norfolk is on top, Sterling Computers on the bottom would be out of South Dakota, and the, the Hundred E, that's the smaller one, right?
Correct.
That first column. And then, he has a three-year warranty on this one, and then, we are going to provide a case for each kid, and you want to talk a little bit about the cases, what those are going to be?
There, it's not going to be like a bag or anything, it's just very similar to what I've got on my laptop right here, just a protective case to go on, so if it gets dropped or slid across the floor, hopefully, the case is going to take the brunt of the damage of whatever seventeen-dollar case versus a two-hundred-dollar laptop. This is much easier to replace versus the, the whole entire device.
And then, in the middle, that would be the bigger device, and then, as you see, has the units broke down for you underneath there. So, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty devices for three-through-eighth grade, and it'd be ninety-three devices through ninth-through-twelfth grade. And we went through our enrollment projections and what it would look like going up, to make sure we would have enough devices. So, if classes are getting bigger coming into the high school, we have enough devices for all those kids while they're there. And then, there's a management console that you have to pay for each device, so Tom's able to control them and make updates and do all that stuff.
Yeah, that's how, that, it's just basically a license that allows me to manage the device through Google's management software. It's pretty much essential to have that in this type of a situation.
Just a one-time deal, that's not?
Right, one-time per device, so it goes with the life of the device.
So, when you buy your devices, you got to buy them?
Yes, it's not transferable to other devices, once I use it, tie it to a device, it's used up, it can never be used again.
So, why aren't you putting cases on all the Hundred E's?
So, the, some of them, the ones that go to seventh and eighth grade will have cases, the ones that go to the elementary, we're not, just because we feel like they're not going to be going home with the kids, they're going to be staying at school, staying in one classroom, and be stored in a cart that will never leave that classroom, and so, they're not going to be exposed to the potential abuse and wear and tear that the rest of them probably will be exposed to. And so, we've just decided not to put cases on those. I have, and granted, they're not necessarily the same device, but I don't have any cases now on any of our MacBooks, I never have. And, and they've handled great. Now, you're also talking about a nine-hundred-dollar device versus a two-hundred-dollar device, so that's a little different, but, so, I guess.
In the elementary building, we will also have, just like Kyle was talking about, a Chromebook policy, or the senior high will also have one in the elementary, and it will talk about, you know, how to carry your device, how to use your device, how it must be on a flat surface, and it'll just have, you know, basic guidelines for teachers and for students. And with them, just taking them from the cart to their desk, back to the cart, there's really, in my opinion, not a strong need for a case. When I taught and had a Chromebook cart in my classroom, I had my cart for six years, and we never had cases on them, and I never had an issue.
Tom, why is the, the case for the Sterling Hundred E's so much cheaper than the Precision?
It's a different case, just a different.
Just what they offer.
Yeah.
So, it's not apples to apples, it's not the same case?
Exactly, yeah.
We talked in the past about not buying the warranty, just buying extra, we'll get to that.
Yeah, so what this is, he put together two spreadsheets, this one has the warranty on there, so you can see the three-year warranty for both devices, you're looking at about twelve thousand dollars, just for a three-year warranty on all those devices. So, the next slide that he put together is if we were to not buy the warranty, but we were to buy extra devices. So, I think we came up with, was it twenty-five extra devices?
Sixty.
We could buy sixty, but.
So, for what, if we went with this and bought a three-year extended warranty on every device, what that three-year extended warranty would cost us, we could not do that and buy sixty extra devices. There's no way we're going to go break, I hope, break sixty devices in four years. So, to save some money, we can drop that, just go with the standard warranty, and then, just buy some surplus devices that are going to sit on a shelf, and if one breaks, or whatever, instead of sending it in for a warranty replacement, you know, basically, you just throw it away and pull a new one off the shelf, and there you go, that's your warranty replacement.
What do you get, standard, a year?
Yeah, you get a standard one year warranty.
So, then, that would, those other devices would be for three years after that, correct?
Right, right, yeah, so you wouldn't use any of those devices, hopefully, the first year, I mean, but you would, could also use them if you had a new kid come in, new family move in, you've got extra devices to give to, you know, new students that come in, that kind of thing.
And we talked about in the elementary, with our kindergarten and our first grade, next year, pushing thirty kids in each class, when you have a couple of smaller classes move out of the elementary, and the bigger classes move up, you're going to have to have a few more devices. So, we would have to have a few extra devices on hand anyways, to make sure that we're meeting all of the students' needs. Heather, you got anything?
No, we're done it.
Would you buy them on front, or could you buy them as you needed them, if you had ten on hand, and then, if you?
I would be buying them at ten, so.
At the end of the series, you don't have twenty brand-new ones sitting there, do you?
Yeah, I would probably buy them when we bought all of these, just because one, when you're buying a bulk like this, you're going to get your best price, so if we didn't buy them with these, they're probably going to be more expensive. Two, that way, they're the same model, same exact specifications as everything else. I know it seems a little weird to buy a brand-new device and just set it on the shelf, but, I mean, for what we're saving by not getting an extended warranty, it kind of just.
So, how many would you buy?
So, we figured, what did we have?
We'd have ten for the elementary, the smaller devices, and then fifteen of the bigger devices, because we currently have twenty of the smaller devices already that we piloted with our juniors. So, we would end up having about thirty extra smaller devices for extra students or growing populations, and then, also, to use those if devices were to get ruined. And then, at the high school level, over a four-year span, we would have fifteen extra large devices. And worse come to worse, the high school could use a smaller. Yep, yep. It's all interchangeable, it's just the size.
Yeah, yeah, it's just one's a little bit bigger. And, I mean, if, if for some reason they all got used up, if we had to, we can, we can go buy another one, I mean, if we needed to. I mean, if you look there, the amount saved, so that first one, doing it this way, buying the fifth, what, thirty-five, no, twenty-five extra devices, is going to be six thousand dollars cheaper than buying the, twenty-five less and getting three-year warranties on everything. So, the same, the other one's about the same, too.
And Trent, I did forward your questions to Tom, so how many of them we haven't answered yet, but he, he's prepared to just share with you anything else he wanted, if anyone knows.
Would iPads be similar than Precision?
Yeah, you could do it that way. I would have to, you'd have to see what price-wise, what an extended warranty costs, and what that warranty would maybe cover. I know that Apple warranties, extended warranties cover screen breaks, which these would not cover a screen break. So, it might be beneficial to get an extended warranty on an iPad, possibly, because you could throw screen breaks, accidental screen breaks into there. But since they're just going to be in the lower elementary in a cart, they're not going home with kids or anything, you probably wouldn't need an extended warranty of those either. I mean, you could use the money you saved on that to buy some nice covers for them, or something like that, and that would help a ton.
So, how many are you looking to buy to put one in every kid's hand from seven to twelve?
Be about two hundred and, two hundred and seventy is what that one's at, two hundred and sixty-eight?
Seven through twelve would be.
Seven, twelve would be six.
Would be all a hundred and eight of the fourteen E's, that's including the fifteen extra.
And forty.
And then, how, how many?
Forty-five is what you planned for cases, so somewhere close to there.
So, what's the, what's the dollar?
Just number one fifty.
So, you want to know what it's going to cost just to use seven through twelve?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I can figure that out. I take a second if you want to talk about something else.
You want me to go on to the light-speed thing, Tom, while you're doing your math?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Did it have that on the previous stream somewhere?
No, the last one, so this would be the extra devices without the warranty, this is the same thing, if we were to buy just what we need for students and include the warranty with it. So, totals are all over on the right, so you're looking seventy thousand if you use a warranty, if you just buy extra devices, you're looking low sixties. So, then, light-speed, light-speed is a program that we would be able to put on all the devices, we have two hundred and eighty units, so right now, you could go in and put it on all the devices, put it on the teachers' devices, and what this allows them to do is to see all of the kids' screens, and we're able to monitor then where they're going, what websites they're going to, and be able to lock their computers, we'd be able to make them see our screen, do basically whatever the teacher wants them to. So, it's a monitoring system for teachers to use to see what's going on on those devices. And also, the thing with it is if kids are going to certain sites, say, they're going to YouTube and listening to music while they're doing their work, if it's distracting, the teacher can go in and block that site just for that student. So, there's different things you can do with it. You want to just watch the video and let them see that part?
If you want to, it's six minutes long, I mean, it's up to you, but it does a really good job of explaining it, yeah.
Classroom is a whole new way to manage your classes, bringing teachers from their desks, keeping students engaged, and taking technology integration to the next level. We're here to help teachers and save time, not to give busy school staff more work, so Classroom is easy to set up and then easy to use. You can manually create your classes and add students, or you can use invite codes, or you can integrate right with your Google Classroom, Student Information System, or other directory service. Then, your classes are automatically created, and all the students are enrolled in their classes. Once you have your classes and students, you want to set the schedule of when the class is held. By setting the class schedule, you are able to determine when a class period is active. Class is short and busy, every instructional minute counts, and teachers don't have time to just watch their screen, analyzing everyone's web activity. Don't worry, we do that for you. If students are on task and working away, the teacher doesn't need to worry about them. It's when students start to be off-task that the teacher's attention is required, that is where insights come in. Through our proprietary algorithm, we surface the students with unusual browsing activity, so that teachers know who to check in on. Once a student triggers an insight, a teacher can quickly peek in on that student, and see what they've been doing and what they are currently doing, and check in with a message or in person. They can also clear the insight. Teachers typically know their students, and who's prone to distraction or getting off-task, so they can also pin students to keep a closer eye on certain students through class. When you want to dive into more information, Classroom makes that easy, too. With this table of class activity, the teacher can see in a glance what their students in a class are up to. This activity list shows who's online, what site they're on right now, what site they've been to most during class, how many sites they've visited, and what their status is, working, needing help, or done, and the site a student is on, and all of this information is updated in real time with no delay, no waiting on screens to refresh, so the teacher gets immediate information. For a quick and more focused view of students, teachers can filter the activities list by status to see just the students they want to pay attention to. Teachers get all the information they need to know who's on task, who needs help, who's lost focus, and who you should follow up with or check in on more closely. When students are working. When students are working, teachers often don't want to interrupt progress. That's why quick and easy communication matters. With Classroom, students are able to set their own status to more easily facilitate and communicate their progress. From their own devices, they can request help from the teacher and inform them that they have completed their assignment. If the activity list is more detailed than a teacher is looking for, they can switch over to the heat map and get a graphical depiction of student activity. As the student browsing behavior changes, so does the color of the student's circle, making it easy to spot any students whose behavior might need to be looked in on. It's not just about monitoring, it's also about keeping the class engaged on their lesson. Classroom provides the teacher a set of group-level controls to quickly set the entire group on course. The teacher can send links to the students, quickly getting everyone starting off on the right foot. This will get all students on the same site, opening their browsers immediately to the links shared. Again, there's no delay, no wasting precious seconds. Teachers can also screen lock the whole class for a quick eyes-on-me, getting everyone's attention offline for teacher instruction or other activity. Teachers can also create Internet access zones to narrow down the websites students are able to get to. Zones give teachers a way to list out individual site URLs that they are allowing their students to go to. This is incredibly useful when teachers want to restrict students to specific lessons or just their LMS, as well as for testing purposes. We're all about saving time for teachers, so the web access restrictions can also be lifted automatically once a student completes their work. So a teacher can create a quiz zone, limiting students to just the site or sites needed for the quiz. When students finish the quiz, they set their status to done, and now their Internet access limits are lifted so they can go about their other work, personalizing progress for the students, all while the teacher is free to move about the classroom, work individually with students, or complete other work. Technology opens up a lot of opportunities for powerful group and individual work. But how does a teacher know when a student is struggling and needs help, or is complete, or is still hard at work? The click of a button lets the teacher know where each student is in their work. We've been looking at the whole class, but what about when a teacher needs to focus in on an individual student? That's easy, too. User details can help teachers take a deep dive into what's going on with one student. To start with, the teacher can see a real-time screen view of the student's active tab. They can also see all the other tabs open in the background. Teachers can click on the different tabs and pull up the tab to view the content of that page. This is extremely helpful when a student might be trying to hide their behavior on one tab by keeping a safe site as their primary tab. See something inappropriate or distracting? In a click, the teacher can close the student's tab if they no longer want it open. In addition to the screen viewing, a teacher can choose to lock just that individual student's screen. They can also record the student behavior for future reference. All of the recordings a teacher creates for a student are all housed in the recordings tab. This gives the teacher a way to capture critical information to later share with the students, counselors, administrators, or parents. Having visual evidence of behavior is the easiest way to facilitate a discussion. The teacher can view the student's browsing history, which shows a list of sites visited. That way, a teacher can get a sense of what the student has been doing over time, not just what they are currently doing. Just as the student can use status messages to get the teacher's attention, teachers can send messages to the students. Teachers can see if students need help, subtly check on a student's progress in the event they are concerned a student might have gone off-topic, or to congratulate and encourage the student for the work they've done. Classroom gives teachers all the information and controls they need to take their use of technology with students to the next level, keeping students on task, engaging in curriculum, identifying students who need help, and more, all while freeing up teacher time, so they're not managing technology or sitting at a desk watching a timeline of student activity. Classroom helps teachers teach and students learn. Find out more at lightspeccystemssystems.com/classroom.
Man, that reminds me of Big Brother in China. It does, you're not watching this, you're not doing that, we shut you down. Holy crap.
Is that just during class time, or is that whenever teachers could...
It's just during class time, so you would set up a schedule and it would just be a one-time setup, so, second period, kids go into Mrs. Moles's class, those are the kids she can see.
Okay.
And then after that, it's her next class and...
But you have access all the time?
Yeah, I mean, I can set up access all the time. I don't think it works off-site, though, I mean, it's just here at school.
Now, the web filtering works off-site, so they don't go home and they have free roam of the Internet, they get filtered by our web filter no matter what.
You're having to walk around looking at the student's desk and push it.
That'll be done, too. I mean, that's, that was our biggest fear that we talked about, um, when the three of us met and sat down and talked about this, but we thought that, um, by teaching them and doing PD on how to use it and stuff, that the benefits of this program highly outweighed the risk of somebody just sitting at a desk and not doing anything with it. Cause I don't think, I don't know, how best would you explain it, Heather? Cause I don't really see it, it happening that you can't run a classroom just by using this tool. I mean, you still have to get up and you have to teach and you have to monitor, and the expectation would still be for teachers to walk around the classroom, be next to students, be doing all those things. It's just something that if a student is being distracted, they have that ability to be able to eliminate those distractions that a device gives them.
Absolutely, and, I mean, the thing about it, I was, I think Tom and Kyle will both tell you, I was very leery about this because I thought it would, um, allow, you know, teachers to not have to get up and walk around, um, but some of the advantages, you know, the ability to push out websites and links to all students and, um, to lock down devices and to even be able to view what, what websites the students are on, on the screen, are on, on the tab behind the tab that they're showing you, um, is just hugely beneficial, I think.
Heather, Jim Thor here.
Hi.
How much time does this take for a teacher to do all this versus the time that they have allotted for the classroom day? I mean, let's, let's say they have an hour class and they're trying to teach X, X topic, whatever it would be, and then they're dinking around with this system, I mean, how much of a distraction is this system from actually teaching?
That's the really cool thing, actually, because, um, this actually can work with our SIS, so, um, Power School can feed into it, so the teachers don't even have to necessarily set up their classrooms and class times, um, so it just automatically will, when the bell rings, um, Lightspeed will know, okay, fourth period's leaving, fifth period's coming in, I can release those devices to their next teacher, and here comes my new students with their new devices. So really, it saves the teacher, I think, a ton of time, um, instead of having to, in the elementary world, instead of having to, um, push out a device or try to shorten a URL enough for students to be able to type it in, um, you just put it in and it pushes it out to all of your students. Um, and then the ability to say, okay, I'm giving a test right now, um, so I'm only going to allow my student to be on this website, you know, these three websites until they're done with this test, um, and then Lightspeed will actually lock the browsers to where they can't go to those other websites until they're marked done on their test, and then, then instantly releases it. So it saves the teacher time from having to go back to her desk and now, her, his or her, and, and now release access so this student can now go on these other websites. Lightspeed is doing it automatically for them.
Boy, in a couple of...
It might, it might take a little bit of time to get to know the system, and we talked a lot about training upfront for the teachers, um, but I think once they have that training and once we have that training, um, I think it'll be hugely beneficial in the classroom, elementary and secondary.
So how many teachers do you have that, this is scary, Jesus, I don't, to go to this.
It's limiting teachers, is what it's gonna do.
Kyle, you wanna take that, or you want me to?
I mean, in the elementary, how many?
One, zero.
They're all, they're all jumping on board with it, they wanted to...
My, the third to sixth grade teachers are, like, chomping at the bit because they were sharing two carts and could never get enough devices for all of their students. We're also looking at possibly a new reading series, and, you know, if, if we look at something like that, a lot of the newer series have, um, online support or online for students, and so having devices in their hands opens up an entire new world to them, having devices in their hands at all times, I should say. Because, yes, we, we currently have devices, but we don't have enough devices for all teachers. If, if we had a, an intervention time for all classes, everybody could not have a device at that time, if that makes sense.
Sure. So as far as the high school teachers go, kids start taking them home, do they start texting high school teachers at night and asking them questions, or do they just, I mean, are teachers on call?
No, I mean, that's one of the things that we'll definitely talk about, too, in the fact that questions get asked while you're at school, it's not one of those things that you email a teacher at ten o'clock at night, can I promise that it won't happen? No, I mean, a kid will put something off till the last minute and be emailing at eleven o'clock at night, but the next day you have that discussion that procrastination is not okay, and that you, you know, we can have that, that chat the next day.
You know, or, I mean, students understand that, okay, you can email your teacher, but your teacher still has a twenty-four-hour to, twenty-four to forty-eight hour window to respond, so just because you waited until ten o'clock at night doesn't mean you'll get a response by ten-thirty.
And I know, I used a program that was very similar to this on PCs when I was teaching, and the thing that I liked about it most is that you can monitor kids and you can do all that stuff, and I know you worry about it hindering teachers, but those kids that were advanced and doing more than everybody else and were done early, I could push out different things to them that they could work on and that other kids didn't know about. So I was able to push out maybe an extra assignment or something to help them go a little bit farther while I'm still helping other kids try and get work done. So, to me, that was one of the biggest benefits, that I could always keep kids engaged and doing things all the time. It wasn't, here's what we have to get done, once you're done, you're done with the class. So that's what I thought was one of the biggest benefits. You got anything else, Heather?
Um, I don't think so unless there's questions.
I have those numbers, Crystal. So the company from North Fork to do seven through twelve would be just under forty-one thousand, um, and then the Sterling would be thirty-nine thousand.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the main reason that we talked about, um, doing this for years and jumping in and doing three-twelve instead of slowly going, you know, nine-twelve or even seven-twelve, um, is because when we looked at what we currently had budgeted for technology, we had quite a bit more than what we thought, um, and the price of Chromebooks, um, Tom, I don't know if you wanna hit on what you would have been spending this year for, um...
Well, so if this doesn't happen, I've got outdated laptops that need updating, um, so if we stay doing the same thing that we have in, and I don't have exact numbers here, let me see, where are those, there we go. So I've got, um, let's see, fifty, probably seventy devices that are six to eight years old, okay, so they are reaching the end of their life. If we keep doing what we're doing and I replace those with MacBooks, you're talking about a two-hundred-dollar device versus a nine-hundred-dollar device, so for sixty-thousand dollars I can get, you know, whatever that is.
Seventy-five.
I can get about sixty-five MacBooks for what we're buying two-hundred and whatever Chromebooks for.
Oldest Lightspeed.
The company?
Oh, wow.
Cause I can't find any negative reviews about it, so I don't know what they're...
You need to find a forum that's run by teenagers.
They hate it, absolutely hate it.
How many MacBooks do you have in total?
Okay.
Not on teachers?
Right.
Just like in the school? Well, I have to do my math, okay, I should have these numbers for you. In my room, I've got thirty, sixty, eighty-two, and thirty iPads, that's in my room for the high school kids to use. So that would be a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve devices for the high school. The elementary has sixty laptops and thirty iPads, and then they've got a computer lab with twenty-two iMac's desktops, just like these ones here, in it. So that's what we're doing now, and I should say, Mr. Komet, there's a few one-off things, Mr. Komet has a few very old computers that he keeps down there just to, so he doesn't have to work, have kids come up here and grab computers all the time. Um, we've got some desktops, ten, nine desktops in the woodshop for CAD. Mrs. Sturkle has a cart that she got for free, like, eight years ago, six years ago, that are MacBooks, um, that she keeps in her classroom, but...
One-sixty.
One-sixty, I guess.
Tom, do you typically have to do like seventy devices a year, like, if you continue doing what you're doing now?
I haven't...
Probably have many.
I haven't bought new devices, the newest devices I have, cause Trent asked me this question, um, are iPads, and this is their third year, the newest MacBooks I have are four years old. And so I haven't been buying new ones because what we have has been doing the job, um, but we're to the point now where the oldest ones don't do the job anymore. Either that they're too slow, cause stuff has been updated so much they can't run it, or batteries are so degraded that they don't last that long, um, or that ones that broke and they just don't work anymore, they're out of warranty. So I need to start replacing some of those, um, one way or another.
My other concern is kids not having Internet at home.
And that's what, with the devices, you are able to work offline with these, so they would be able to open the documents that they need whenever they're gonna work outside the bu- the building, and then set them to work offline, and then when they go home, they'd be able to work on those, do their homework, and when they come back to school and get Internet access, it would then upload, so they would be able to do that.
So will the Chromebooks block the, the MacBooks? Cause the teachers will have MacBooks, right? Correct, yes. So...
Everything will be web-based.
So, so what's gonna happen is, the Chromebooks are a Google device, so we're gonna use Google Docs, which is Google's version of Word, PowerPoint, Salty, that's all online, so you just access it through a web browser. So, yes, the, the teachers have full access to everything that the kids would have access to.
And it's all gonna be run through school email that we already have set up for kids.
Yep.
So... And that's another thing, we'll block all personal email accounts, which you already do, so...
On the Chromebooks.
On the Chromebooks, you can.
So why'd you decide Chromebooks instead of the i, the Apple?
Price.
Price, I would say is the biggest reason. I mean, they can do virtually almost everything they need to do on a two-hundred-dollar device, so why spend nine-hundred dollars for just a little bit more?
That's why we bought, what, thirty of them?
Twenty.
Twenty of them to try?
Yeah.
Cause they liked them.
And I didn't get any complaints, I mean, the kids said, yeah, they can do everything they needed to, um, they liked them, they said they were only having to charge their battery two or three times a week, which I thought was, I was kinda surprised by that, which is awesome, um...
My kid's got one, um, you know, dang excited about him, he's got an old MacBook as well. I mean, he put that away for this whole quarter, um, when did they get them, just before?
I think it was February.
Early, end of January.
So, you know, we've, you, you've slowly kinda transitioned into this, you know, already. We really can't go back, I mean, to be quite honest with you, what we've done this past quarter, um, I mean, kids, if we were to say, okay, kids, we're gonna go back to the way we were doing things, uh, up to March tenth, um, so I, there're probably a lot of schools having this conversation, you know, that, okay, we, we now need to continue with some hybrid of, you know, the face-to-face and e-learning. you know, the face-to-face and e-learning. We have to do more of this e-learning because, I mean, it's just, it's what's best for kids. I mean, so, and we, we had kind of known that this was a direction we were going to go. We had this conversation with Heather and Kyle when they interviewed. Couldn't do this without the support of Tom. I mean, so you have the right people in place to do it right now, to do it correct, I should say. Whereas prior to, I don't, I don't know that, that we did.
It looks to me like we're going to be up and down year to year on what we spend. We're going to spend, that year we spend kindergarten through eighth grade, maybe year. We have a couple of years. I'd like to see if we could level that out somehow. So three years are pretty much even. Then saying not in the fourth year, you never going to know what that's going to be. So whether that means holding off on a couple more of the younger grades, moving them down to kindergarten to third or whatever, and dropping them out of that to your high age group, wait one more year, just to even the price out. So we kind of budget the same thing every year, roughly. Would that be a possibility?
Because that would be something we talked to you about, Tom. Because we had talked about doing two different timetables, but then that's adding the possibility of another device to manage or a different model.
Yeah. It's definitely possible, Tom. And like I said, that's why I didn't want to do the thing with the freshmen getting new ones every year, just because the potential for lots of different devices. This would only add one more, which wouldn't be a huge deal. So yeah, I mean, it's absolutely possible that you could take a few of the, the bottom end of the elementary kids that are getting Chromebooks and put those grades in with the iPad users to even those prices out. An iPad, I don't have exact numbers, unofficial quote, but last time I looked, they're roughly $300 a device. So you're not going to be able, you're going to get less for the same price as what you get a Chromebook for. But yeah, that's absolutely something that could be done to make that, those prices more even throughout.
It would be easier just to do it by the building, to do one building this year. And then, you know, basically try it out, get your over all time. And then if everything's going good, then next year, do the elementary.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's absolutely possible.
That would keep your devices all, the one building is, if you would change, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
You'd have it all in the same building, then the building would always be the same. And then you wouldn't have some over there and some over here.
Right, yeah.
Two different ones over there and one over here.
Yeah, that would be an easy way to do it. That, yeah, that way if I did have a different model, they'd all be in the elementary.
They'd all be in the one.
Yeah.
So when you upgrade, you upgrade the building.
My concern with that is that, just like Dr. Arnold had said, you know, seven through 12 students have already been working in this kind of digital world. So have the elementary students. Yes, they're still coming in and getting packets, but they're also doing a lot of things virtually. And my concern is, you know, the start of next school year, we don't know what that's going to look like. And so if for the same price of what we would be purchasing for Mac, for Apple devices, if we can equip our third to sixth graders with Chromebooks and, you know, God forbid, something happened at the beginning of next year and we not be able to start as normal, then we are that much further ahead. It puts the elementary students that much further ahead for next year when it comes to just possibilities. And like I said, you know, obviously it's up to you guys, but if the money is already there and already budgeted, I just don't see why we wouldn't jump in when we have the means to jump in with both feet.
The other thing that we talked about, Heather, was we could probably get five years out of a device in the elementary. So if we, if we went 312 now with Chromebooks, the next time we're up to buy them, we could just buy 712 and then the next year push down the elementary. So they would get five years out of that device. So the initial one to get everything started would be a bigger amount, but after that, we could even it out for, over those four years.
Absolutely. Since those devices aren't being taken home, we, yeah.
So do you think if we're, God forbid, we start school the way we are now, you're going to be able to push these out to third graders? They're going to be able to use them without having any, being taught by a teacher firsthand? You're just going to be able to have them come in and pick one up and take it home and use it? You're not putting cases, you can't send them home. Well, but we're sending them home now, right? They've got, some of those kids are getting computers for this situation. So if we had them, we would probably send them home with those kids.
Well, we'd have to, we'd, we'd need to buy cases and everything for them.
But those kids would be able to figure them out anyway.
Take steps. But I would have no problem sending them home for six. And then maybe a couple of weeks into it, after some training can be done. And that's if, God forbid, worse scenario next year. Sorry, I'm kind of faking.
We don't start on time or we're not in the building?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I would like to see if we do this, that it gets evened out a little bit. If you could do that, you know, we've got the money, but you're not going to do it all now. If down the road you can get that thrown out, evened out a little bit. Maybe that screws a few up with a lot more different versions, but... Moving three is still very manageable. I mean, I was worried about with what they wanted to do, the possibility. And it still, it was just a possibility. I mean, you never know when vendors are going to drop a model and come out for new one. Sometimes it's every year, sometimes they'll love a new model for three or four. So it's just, it all depends. But, I mean, with what they want to do, there's possibly a six, you know, that could have been a nightmare. But three, you know, that's not going to be...
Who wants pink in you, Tom?
So you don't want to use any of the MacBooks that we have, the 72, that would be good, yeah?
Well, so no, I'm not going to get rid of all these MacBooks. They're not just going to get thrown away or something. You know, the ones that I feel aren't usable anymore, I'm going to get rid of. The ones that are usable, like Mrs. Thompson said, Mrs. Goode's is going to use some of those this coming year because, to give her group. And we talked about other ones going into classrooms. They need to replace some computers that they have already in their classrooms that are very old that need to be replaced, that kind of thing. So yeah, I will still, those aren't just going to, you know, sit on a shelf and rot away or get thrown in the garbage. We'll find a place for the, the good ones that are still in the school. And I don't know if this has ever been brought up, but there will always be, even if this goes through, there will always be a cart of MacBooks in my room for kids to use. That will just be the old teacher laptops. So when the teachers get their new laptops, I'll take their old ones and put it in a cart in my room for those few times where they need a device or need to do some kind of device that a Chromebook can't do. Then they can come and get a MacBook to do an iMovie project. Or if there's a program that we need to install that can't be installed in a Chromebook, they can come and get one of those, which is, would be very, not very often, but that would still be available for kids to do. And that wouldn't be any extra cost because I'm just using the old teacher laptops.
So it'd actually be 1.2 to 1, instead of 1 to 1?
So you can get all these and have them ready by August?
Yeah.
I will say that I had the opportunity to read seven applications for a scholarship. And out of those seven, six, seven, seven, and these are all seniors would like to see our school go 1 to 1. They said it was more than, they enjoyed actually having these MacBooks that they, wasn't it MacBooks the seniors had?
Yes.
Yep.
So to me, that's, you know, set volumes if we're looking at, you know, what the kids are interested in.
That's awesome to hear.
That is.
Tom, do you see any additional cost in upgrading your network infrastructure at all?
Nope, I did that last year in preparation for this. So, well, actually this year I updated all the, well, not all the wireless, but the outdated wireless. I updated network switches and stuff for...
Saturate your points.
No.
It'd be good.
Nope.
Okay, good.
So it's a dollar amount we're going to be looking at, or just want, just to prove it from what you have?
Well, I would say under 65, right, Tom?
And you have budgeted what?
We've got one up to say, we're, we're still, we still have over $80,000 in the budget for a potential 1 to 1 model. So we have enough in the budget for either one, any one of these four scenarios.
Do you have to buy programs for these then?
No.
Are they all free?
They're, yeah, they're all free. A Chromebook is kind of more like an app store. So you go out and you get the apps and you can put them on there and you can use free apps and that kind of thing. But right out of the bat, no, I mean, what, it's going to be ready to go right out of the box.
Chromebooks are ready to tie away when they get it.
Oh, the teachers, no, teachers, we don't, the only thing we have to purchase for the teachers is that Lightspeed classroom thing that we showed you. There is a Lightspeed for that one.
Is that $100?
That, uh, one's for cheap. A little info on the two companies, I never bought anything from either one. The Sterling one, it's out of North Sioux City. Our ESC does a lot of business with them, they are a little bit cheaper. The people out of Norfolk, they're out of Norfolk, it's local. I could, I would, could go to them to get any warranty work done, any replacement parts, anything like that. It would just be out of Norfolk.
Actually Sterling Computers is owned by a Norfolk Catholic graduate that lives on Skyview Lake.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the big mall they build in behind, Tukasa in there, he owns all that.
Okay.
Now you can get us a better deal?
It is a better deal. I don't know him personally. Can I make the motion, Mr. President? I make the motion to approve the purchase of the necessary devices transitioned to 101 student e-device model. The purchase of a Chrome devices is supported with an amount not to exceed 65,000.
Second?
Second.
First and second? Trent? Yeah, I think we'll spin it around. Tim?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yeah.
Myself, yes.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. Yes, you're welcome.
Now, I don't want to be calling in to help you clean computers.
Then you can't call him to harvest.
Yeah. Hey, I started that first.
Yeah? No, did it?
Okay. Yeah, man. Number 11, discuss and take possible action on accepting the resignation of Connor Zimmer.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we've got to sign contracts, I'd have to be here if we don't.
Yeah, and we still recommend, I guess, you know, I can bring you up to speed on where we are with hiring his replacement. We have extended an offer to the vocal music teacher at Pierce, who has to be released from her contract.
Thanks, Tom, for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Who has to be released from her contract in Pierce. Pierce has had an applicant for that job from Bancroft-Rosalie. That teacher has to be released from her contract in Bancroft-Rosalie. So I'm working with the superintendent in Bancroft-Rosalie. I have sent, sent him a resume of a potential applicant. He's trying to persuade his previous vocal instrumental to come out of retirement because he wants to release his in Bancroft to go to Pierce, which would free up Pierce's to come here. So that's, this is what you get after April 15th from time to time.
Circle is back to Hastings?
We still recommend that, that you go ahead and...
This is the vocal teacher in Pierce.
And release him. Terry Hazelhorst. So it's encouraging that Pierce wants to rela, and most schools are like that. You know, if somebody wants a different job and it's a step up, or whatever the case may be. You know, most, you know, school districts want to go ahead and let you do that. Generally, May 11th is not too late this year, things are a little different. So it's encouraging that Pierce wants to release her, but they got to take care of them. It's encouraging that Bancroft wants to release their gal, but they got to take care of themselves. So we've talked about scenarios, Heather and Kyle and I. If it doesn't happen, we release Connor, which we're recommending, let him go. And if Bancroft doesn't get somebody, so then Pierce doesn't get somebody, so they, we can manage. And we've, I've asked Terry, you know, I, I expect that she would come next year, right? I mean, we of course would advertise and such, but she has said her heart is set on teaching at Plink. She came and interviewed and Kyle and Heather, you know, are very impressed I sat in on the tail end of it, at any rate. So we could conceivably manage. I don't really want this to get out to the public. But we, we could make something work if something unexpected doesn't happen at this point with another candidate. So we're, we're prepared to still be okay letting Connor go and us maybe not having the candidate that we'd like.
I'll make a motion to accept the vaccination of Connor Zimmer effective at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year.
First and second, myself, yes, Crystal?
Yes.
What? Discuss and take possible action on setting substitute teacher salary.
Okay, for the past several years, this is, we've left this the same. It's, it has gotten noticeably tighter. And particularly our long-term subpay is well below what most school districts are paying. So your long-term kicks in when, let's say somebody's substitute teaching for somebody on maternity leave. So it's pretty typical that after X amount of days, and a school sets that wherever they want it to be, after X amount of days, they get a bump in pay because they're probably doing more than just passing out worksheets, showing a video, whatever, what have you. So right currently, you can see we're at 105 and 125. You know, anywhere in the range of 115 to 125 per day and 150 to 175 would get us in the ballpark of other school districts.
Say that again.
115 to 125 a day and 150 to 175 a day for long-term. Some school districts will place a long-term on their salary schedule. If we were to put somebody on our side, it'd be over $200 a day. If we were to put them on base pay per diem divided by 185, it'd be about $218 a day. And some school districts do do that, I'm not recommending that, but... So it's, it's been, it's been tighter this year for subs. For a couple, for a number of reasons, but...
So I don't, can't find that paper, where are we at now? We're at 105?
We're at 105 and 125.
Three times a 10% increase. For more.
More for long-term.
So this works a little different than bus drivers, apparently. You raise the price and you get people to come.
Well, yeah, we, I, it just, we haven't raised it in several years. And so we've gotten a little behind. I mean, we've, we've got our steady... I mean, we've, we've got our steady handful of folks that we can call. We, we had a few that got called to other districts that pay a little more. And we're unavailable to us, to be, to be quite honest. We had three of our regulars that started subbing at, at a few other schools more routinely and weren't available to us.
What were they paying? Do you know?
Well, I know we lost one to go long-term at Alcorn Valley for a hundred and eighty some. I know it was over one eighty.
I don't have a problem with one twenty and one fifty.
Yeah, I would recommend we stay on the lower end, we can always raise it again if we have to. Go with that.
I'd agree with what Krista said. Sure.
I'll make a motion to second daily substitute teacher pay rate at a hundred and twenty dollars in a long-term eleven plus consecutive date rate at a hundred and fifty dollars for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Trip?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, discuss to take possible action on offering a one point O FTE teaching position to Mackenzie Adamson.
So you have her resume in front of you. Graduated in December, spent doing a long-term sub in Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools. Spectacular young talent.
Planning on moving to the district?
Don't know for sure what her housing requirements are gonna be.
Where's she from originally?
Sure hope so. She graduated.
She's from O'Neil.
She graduated from O'Neil, but parents live in Norfolk now, Heather?
Yeah.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
She's an O'Neil public, yeah, O'Neil public grad.
I'll make a motion to approve the one point five FTE certified contract to Mackenzie Adamson for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second. Yes, my first and second, and Hattor?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Tim? Yes.
Trip?
Yeah.
Okay, discuss to take possible action on offering a one point O FTE teaching position to Crystal Hoffman.
She's been teaching for Plainview Public Schools for free this semester. You guys know Crystal. So I don't, Mrs. Thompson, do you have anything to add about Crystal Hoffman?
I'm excited to hopefully welcome her to the teaching staff.
Yeah. She will be able to hit the ground running, as they say, you know, knows, knows us very well, kids know her very well.
In the years, hasn't she been in the school since Carrigan? Never many.
She's spent a few years at Osmond, as you know. But when did we hire her as a para? About three years ago. She's been Mrs. Berniker's para for the past three years.
And she would be teaching what?
First grade. She's an additional first grade teacher.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a one point O FTE certified contract to Crystal Hoffman for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second.
First, second, and myself, yes, Trip?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Okay, we're under reports. Activity directed. We're reporting short and sweet for nothing but nine.
But like you said, we had an insurance claim on full vault pit, so I think that was thirteen thousand. The bid we had was fourteen thousand, so there's not too much difference in that. The bid come out today that we will be able to open the weight room June first and have kids in here, we just have to keep them ten or less. But we can rotate kids in and start doing some of our summer activities starting as of June one. And then they'll reevaluate at June eighteen, I think is the second one, and see what we can do from that point.
Yeah, do a thorough cleaning in between or anything?
After, at the end of every day, we're supposed to wipe everything down and clean it all, so. That's where we're at, so. Principal support. Secondary, our plan for check-in is next week, it'll be May twenty-first and twenty-second. So each age group will be assigned an hour that they can come in and check in devices and then pick up all their stuff. So on the twenty-first, it's seniors, juniors, and sophomores. On the twenty-second, it'll go freshmen, eighth grade, seventh grade. And then we did set a graduation date for July eleventh, that'll be at ten AM. The seniors are requesting that we keep it traditional and do it in the Tartan Gym, so that's what we're gonna try and do with them. They also want to do a cruise night on May sixteenth, so this Saturday, they wanted to start it at eight twenty, so that's twenty twenty military time, they want to do that. And we'll have a few more details with that, but everybody can come down to the football field. We ask public to stay in their vehicles and stuff. We will let seniors get out and sit in the stands and spread out because we are gonna do some fireworks around nine o'clock down at the football field for them after that, when they're all done. Awards night, athletic banquet, we're gonna do that virtually and we're kinda shooting videos and coaches are doing that as well and sharing them with me and then we're gonna put it all together. I have packets in my room for all the kids when they check in, we'll hand them a packet with all of their letters and awards that they received, that they would have got on award night. So all that'll be taken care of. I know Mrs. Thompson's doing elementary awards, she's doing those through a video link as well and is gonna send that to the parents. Grades are gonna be due on May twenty-second. Right now, we have summer school set to run July sixth through July thirty-first. So we'll be ordering our online program for that that we use Apex is what we've used traditionally, so we've been in contact with them and getting license set up for that. And then, Mrs. Thompson, you can do the last one.
And I really just have some data that I want you guys to be able to look at. At the beginning of the year, we had talked about looking at a new reading program for next year. Teachers were supposed to be piloting that fourth quarter. Unfortunately, that wasn't able to happen. So instead, we had, I had all teachers do a deep dive into it and each week they looked at different portions of the program and then gave me feedback on it. From what the teachers have researched, they really like this program. How did you give them each?
Yep, they all have them.
Perfect. So if you'd like to check out their reviews, I wanna make sure that you have that. The biggest part of it is if you're looking at the front page and you just see the ed reports, you can see that Wonders twenty twenty is great across the board. So the state goes through and ranks different programs and just determines whether they are high quality. And Wonders twenty twenty was ranked high quality all the way across. So if you have any questions, as you look that over, I know it's a ton of teacher responses. If you have any questions, feel free to email me. But otherwise, I would like to be able to bring you a quote next month to consider for Wonders twenty twenty-four next year.
When did we adopt treasures, Heather?
Oh, I don't have that on, on me.
Yeah, I think, that's, that's no problem. Treasures is the, is the predecessor to Wonders, so it is, it's a pretty seamless transition from current reading series to, to Wonders.
It wouldn't be seamless, but just a little bit. So it went treasures and then Wonders twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty. So it's quite a huge leap, but yet very similar feel.
Yeah. And this was the reading series in Heather's previous school at NPS, she's very familiar with it, so she prepared to lead with the, the transition of it. Kind of disappointing we didn't really get a really, a good real pilot, they had prepared well to pilot it.
And the teachers were very excited to pilot.
So it's usually, you know, the most important decision and oftentimes the most expensive one that you make with regard to elementary resources and, and what, what particular set of resources or program or publisher that you're gonna use.
So is it computer-based or hardcover-based?
Yeah, I'd be, both.
It's actually, it's both. And actually, it's in another transition with the twenty twenty version. So it has a hardcover book, then it has a softcover book that students would be able to write in. So as they're learning about different genres, they're actually manipulating it as they learn and then moving to the hardcover. But it also has a pretty awesome web-based program as well. It has games, the teacher resources, the teachers love the planning that it has. Yeah, so it has, it has both.
So we'll have a figure for you to consider next month.
She likes to spend money.
We thought maybe this.
I thought we were gonna get off the hook tonight, she wasn't gonna be here.
Yeah.
Never miss an opportunity.
Too many computers. Okay, is that the end of your report?
Yep, that's the end of us.
Okay. Skip mine again, so. See if you guys have any questions or anything you want me to bring up or let me know. Superintendent's report.
Really, you know, the state aid certification, I'll confirm for you next month. It's not gonna make a big difference, but we're, we're gonna, we're about where we were last year. It's about, I don't know, forty, fifty thousand dollars, but those financial figures are just coming out now. Big thing is, you know, our, our staff and putting our staff together. I shared with you the over-under on, you know, salaries out versus salaries in. Our, the other position that we're looking to fill is this science position, Mrs. Miller. So we've, this is starting, Mr. Schmidt, he acts like a pretty cool cat, but I know he's getting nervous about this because it does affect his schedule, which he's put together. So we initially advertised for science just as it was. We transitioned to a science slash math. We've now, we're now saying, we're just gonna get, you know, if we, if we had somebody with a math endorsement, we've got other people that we can kinda cobble together to teach that and that, but the, and we haven't had any hits on the, on the math either until this afternoon. A potentially outstanding applicant contacted me, and so we're gonna aggressively pursue this candidate who, I wish we could tell you a little more about it, but we can't. But so that may, that may be, may be the one that we've been waiting for. And that does tend to happen. You're like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? And then something happens in people's lives and all of a sudden, when you had no candidates in April, well, none whatsoever, you get the, the one that you, you know, didn't know was out there, it happens in May, so.
Are they obligated to somebody at this point?
They aren't.
They aren't.
And that's the, that's the beauty of it. They don't have to have some school district let them out. So, so hopefully, I don't wanna get too optimistic, but wanna be confident that, that when they come and meet Mr. Schmidt, they'll say, boy, that's the kind of principal I wanna have, you know? No pressure. So really, I got him on the hook for you, so. So that will hopefully take care of itself, and that's really all I have this month. We're up to fifteen thousand meals, by the way. Fifteen thousand meals delivered since the twenty-third of March. Fifteen thousand meals delivered. And we got reimbursement for those, we got a nice check from the USDA.
Well, not yet. I have a claim submitted.
We have a claim submitted, they might say denied, but.
Pay for our ice cream machine?
But again, we, yeah. We're serving, we're serving way more meals than we served before and we're being reimbursed fully for every single one, not just the free, not just the reduced. So, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to make money off of this deal, but.
So if your kids aren't getting it.
It's not too late. It's not too late to sign this. All right.
Okay, Richard, thank you all. Thanks for coming. Now I know next time I don't wanna show up.
Favorite cheat sheet here though. Cheat sheets, I have nothing.
Do you have anybody that wanted?
Didn't even address it. I guess we can clear it, ask that.